We'll open the meeting at 6:03. Okay, anybody have any adjustments?
I have one. I can give a brief update on the derelict buildings issue. Couple, couple points on that from, but that's it for me. And then just to mention that Chuck said there really wasn't much to report for Town Highway, so he's...
I'd like to, I might say a couple things about the Bachelorland when we get to the...
All right, I'll edit on here. Where do you want to do that under?
Well, let's go ahead and talk about the Town Hall.
Okay, I'll put Bachelorland. You got anything? I'm good otherwise.
Otherwise.
All right, um, public comment. We have only one public here. You're good?
Good too.
Oh, that's right, Diana. Well, I'm used to her. The problem is I'm used to her being here.
A fixture.
You're good?
Ronnie's becoming a fixture.
Ronnie's becoming a fixture. We won't notice him soon. Okay, um, approve the bills. I guess I've signed them. Michael signed them, so we should...
Uh, all but one instead of those, which I will...
You want this signed, approved by signature?
Sure.
Um, how about the minutes? We're up to the minute.
I'm giving this.
I'll maintain a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January 10th, 2022 Select Board meeting. I will second Michael Gray's motion.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're up to Robin.
Well, since the last meeting, it's pretty much been the town report.
Mm-hmm.
And I have got all of the, I might have had it done for the last minute, all of the dog licenses printed out, so when people come in, they're all set to go. And we have gotten a few candidates to be put onto the ballot. Do you want to know who they are or what position they're for?
Sure.
Moderator for Stephen Murphy.
That'd be good.
Town Clerk, myself.
Lucky you.
One-year selectman, Jason Thompson. One-year select person, Peter Pelz. Three-year select person, Diana Paduzzi.
Ooh, what's wrong with you?
Three-year lister, Mary Jengemi. Three-year auditor, John Reed, who was very helpful in putting the town report together.
He sure was, yeah.
And we have a one-year auditor, Jane Lorendo.
Oh, Lorendo, okay. Perfect.
Tax code, delinquent collector of delinquent taxes.
It's almost painful. It's almost painful to have that discussion every meeting.
Right. Cemetery Commissioner for five years, Amy Eldredge. Hazen Board, three years, Christopher Casey. And that's it.
Okay, well, good. Good to see some interest.
Do you have a sense of what ones are going to be kind of blanks?
But we still have an auditor, a two-year, two years have remaining of a three-year auditor, right?
So maybe there aren't any blanks. That'd be nice.
And we have a new assistant at the Town Hall, Pam Encuta. Her husband, Bruce, who has since passed away, he used to be on the Planning Commission years ago.
Uh-huh. That's good. Wow.
And I think that's it.
Okay. Anyone got a question for Robin?
Um, I'll have some questions when we get down to the zoning notices of violation. We'll just wait till then, I guess.
We got the estimate of the audit of the Town Office back.
Good. That was a question I wanted to ask you, if that actually happened or not. It sounds like it did, yeah.
Yeah, he's got it dated January 17th. It came in at $6,761.
Uh-huh, yeah. So I guess at some point we'll talk about this.
That's to do this year?
No, there's no, um...
We're good this year, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can do some of it this fiscal year. It's basically for us to decide, you know, whether we want to do it all at once or prioritize different parts. It'll, it'll be definitely something to think about and discuss and, and make a plan for. I'm not sure what all is on there at this point.
Okay.
Send that to us.
It's all for a reasonable...
Email, yeah.
It's not in the budget.
No, it's not in the budget, that's the thing.
But we did, did we put it in the 23 budget?
No.
We didn't. No, but we did put extra money in the building fund.
To do it, okay.
Yeah, sorry. And that's probably where we'll go.
If we get ARPA money for the Town Hall, then...
I was going to say, can either ARPA money, can that fall under any of that?
We'd have to check it out.
We'd have to work, yeah.
It has to have some connection.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think much would actually carry over.
Okay.
Has to be kind of related to...
It has to be related to pandemic.
Pandemic issues, yeah.
Well, it's to keep the germs out so we stay healthy.
Welcome to federal funding, 101. You have a round hole and they give you an oblong peg that you gotta fit in there. That's what federal funders do. All right, anyone else getting anything for Robin?
No, I do not.
And we've treasurer.
Brandy is...
Brandy's out. We did have bills to sign, so, and we've paid our bills, so we're good for another two weeks.
Okay.
Tom came in today, did the payroll.
Okay.
Well, he did up those bills too.
He did all the bills, so we had AP to do too. Okay, um, up the Town Hall renovation.
Are they already?
We are. We're just flying. Zipping right along.
My goodness. So you all probably know on our little ad hoc committee, we have two very experienced, knowledgeable historic preservation people. One is Liz Pritchett, who lived in town for many years, and she's the one that had that building and this building put on the National Historic Preservation Year. And the other one is Mary Jo Lewin, who lives out in Laotown. They both worked for the state for many years, and Liz is now retired, and Mary Jo is, is a consultant. So we talked, we've had a few meetings, and Michael's working on the bat situation.
Which I have enough to...
But in order to, to get ready to put in for some ARPA money, we need to get some estimates of what it might cost. And we can't do anything, of course, until we get the historic preservation part taken care of, so we know what, what we can and can't do. So anyways, they suggested that we hire Jan Lewandowski, who is an expert consultant. I think he lives in Stanford. He's a specialist in timber frame buildings, which is what we have. And we can either ask the state for $250 towards a $500 project, which would be a small report, or we can just give them $1,000 for a better report. And that way, we don't have to putz around with the state, you know, the, they're, Mary Jo's contacted them a few times, and they're busy and all that. So, um, we, assuming that the Town Hall project is going to qualify for ARPA money, and I don't know who else in the town is going to get any, haven't heard much about that yet. But anyways, what we do spend on this now, we could take out the ARPA money.
Just keep track of it, yeah, but it belongs, yeah.
So in addition to that, $1,000, I'd like to have you approve $200 to $500 for an energy audit, because that would bring us some prices, like this one for the Town Office.
Right, I think the audit itself, and that's, you know, not, doesn't account for the work that it suggests is, that's a $200, it's pretty much a straight rate of $200 through efficiency Vermont.
I'm pretty sure we've got a few thousand dollars in the fund for that building to do.
Yeah, we do, we do.
And we did put some more, we put 10 toward it for next year too.
Right.
So that's your request would be $1,500?
Right, which would probably be reimbursable. It might not be $500 if you haven't got it.
Potentially, yeah.
If you were only going for $500, why would you request 200 from the state? But now you're up to $1,000, you requested no money from the state.
Right.
Why?
Because it's not worth bothering, it's not worth losing the time. If we get $200 towards a $500 study, then we only have a $500 study, which is not...
Why can't you, why can't you put the 200 towards the $1,000 study?
Um, that's not the way the program works, according to Mary Jo, who's, who's...
Welcome to state programs.
Who's the one.
I mean, if we're giving $250, I mean, that's my tax money.
Yeah, she's been trying to, she's been trying to contact these people, and it's been early.
My understanding of that situation is also that the $1,000 would be, we would get a much more extensive report from Jan Lewandowski, which would be actually a benefit in the planning of, of the renovation at Town Hall.
Well, I'm just for the understanding, how come we still couldn't apply for the $250 even though we're going for a larger amount?
Yeah, because I think it's the way their program works. I've run into programs like that, you get a, you get the Ugo for 500 bucks, and they'll pay $200 of it, or you get the good report for 1,000 if you buy it yourself. But they won't give you the money toward 1,000. It makes zero sense.
Right.
But it's, it's anything that state, federal program wise, that's how it works, unfortunately. So what do you folks want to do?
Make a motion to approve the $1,500 towards the...
Motion to approve?
Those more robust, complete study. I'll second that.
Motion to second is there discussion? Is there any other person that can do that, that, that discussion?
Mary Jo really highly recommended this guy. He's local and he's experienced, and, you know, we don't need to go out the bid for a $1,000 contract, so...
Yeah, he definitely is kind of topping his field, he's from northern Vermont.
Any other discussion or questions? Well, vote on it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody who passes?
So I can give you a bad update.
They're probably hibernating, so forget it.
It's pretty interesting, is it bad or bad?
A bad update or a bad update?
It's a good update. It's a good bad update. So I went up into the attic a couple weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, can't remember. And I took some samples of some of the guano, and we sent it to Fish and Wildlife. And it turns out that the, what we have in the attic is the little brown bat, which is on the state's endangered species list at this point.
Of course it is.
Yeah, of course.
How much more does that cost?
So we'll definitely, you know, want, there were no bats there at all. I had a couple of pretty strong lights with me. I didn't see any sign of bats at all. But, so I was thinking of contacting the Eliminator Pest Control person, we got the, the invoice to do the exclusion work and the sealing up of the fascia on the, on the north side to keep the bats out. I don't know whether they would do it this winter or first thing this spring, but if we can get it closed up before the bats return, then, then we don't have to worry about them being in there. And there really isn't a whole lot of bat guano there in the attic. It's really pretty minimal, which was, and most of it's on either end of the gables. That seems to be where they, where they hang out. Of course, one end is right where you go through the door to get up in there. But there were just little piles all along the edge of the, of the gables, and, and a little bit going through the, the main roof being, the peak, peak being. And it definitely, it was interesting to see that it was pretty much logs and woodpins holding all that stuff together.
It's eating up a little.
I couldn't see, you know, there was, there is a fair amount of blown-in insulation on top, so I couldn't see how it all connected underneath, but... So, yeah, so that's pretty much, you know, I think that if we can get...
So to have the contractor deal with it?
As soon as, as soon as they want.
We approved doing it, didn't we?
We did, yeah.
So I think we just get it scheduled and...
If I'm not wrong, the estimate was about $2,500. And the cleaning part of it will be hardly anything, I think. I think most of that expense will be closing, closing it up. And they might want to do it this winter or certain...
And then hopefully that other person come up with a permanent repair for a roof.
So do they take that stuff out of the attic from outside of the building?
No.
Or do they go inside of the building where that little hole is...
In the attic.
They'll, they'll be in the attic getting, removing the guano, yeah. How they do it, I don't know.
I don't know. Probably a little guano vacuum.
Yeah, that, actually, but that would work pretty best.
Probably do some kind of little hepa vacuum or something. With that, we don't have vermiculite in the attic.
So then after they get the stuff out of the attic, does it have to, does the building have to sit dormant for a while before we can run it out again?
No, and we can run it out now.
I know we can now, but after all of that dust and everything?
Well, you know, I would imagine that there wouldn't be much dust coming down into the space below when they, when they clean it out. It really is, it's not going to take that much. And the fellow Marcus did mention that, that the cleaning would be pretty minimal and pretty easy to do, actually.
Okay.
So, I mean, they basically, the guano is pretty much sitting on top of the, the insulation, the blown-in paper insulation that's there, so, yeah, probably somebody with a shot bat could also do it. Although there is a fair amount up in the peaks of the gables that they'll need to remove somehow, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I was expecting like, you know, six inches everywhere of stuff, and that's not, not the case, so... So, yeah, should be, should be able to use it. I don't think there'll be any restrictions once they're done, yeah.
Is that it for Town Hall?
I think so.
Okay. Man, we're zipping along. We're going to get a world record, I hope. All right. We are up to special town meeting.
Well, we were gonna, I was gonna talk about that bachelor.
Yeah, I was gonna do it here, so go ahead, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, all the people involved have died. The lawyer is messing with the, you know, setting up different estates for them and trying to find heirs and things like that, so that's going to take some time. But in the meantime, the Housing and Conservation Board is interested in giving us the purchase price, plus they're happy to give other money for upfront costs, late assessments and appraisals and things like that. So we need to have an appraisal, don't need to have a, a survey.
We don't?
No.
Really?
No, no survey required.
What are you talking about?
A wetland area over off Cranberry Meadow.
This has been ongoing a couple of years.
Yeah, it has been going on for a while.
Yeah, it started right before COVID hit.
If we're talking about Town Hall, then special town meeting, I didn't know what we're doing.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I stuck her in there in between.
Stuck it in there. So anyways, I got an estimate for an appraisal for $2,000. Matt Peters, who's a consulting ecologist who lives here in town, volunteered to do a very nice two-page letter about what a special place it is. And then he suggested that VHCV might also pay for an assessment of other things that might be there that could be researched. So he gave me an estimate of $600 for that. And Chris Green gave me an estimate of $550 for any legal expense that might have to be done on our end. And all that can be paid for by the VHCV as part of the project, but it's reimbursable. The actual money for the purchase will be presented at the closing directly from them. It doesn't have to go through the town. But in the meantime, these few things we apply for, I forgot the name of the grant, I didn't bring the file, but the first step in the program is to do these assessments, and that would be reimbursable. So I thought maybe about asking the Conservation Commission whether we should take the money from their fund, and, I mean, it would be reimbursed, you know, so, since it's not really budgeted in the town.
Would you just tell me what VHCV stands for?
Vermont Housing and Conservation Board.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Conservation Commission, they have that wetland fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think that they would be, I mean, amiable to that. I'm a member of that, the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, I wonder whether Brandy would prefer to have it that way, since there's nothing budgeted for this in the town budget anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, I guess, yeah, ask Paul.
Yeah.
Paul Counselor, and we can, we didn't have a meeting this month, but we could decide that February.
So...
You're good with that?
Yeah.
There's the update. All right.
Good with that? Okay.
Special Town Meeting. So Michael got an update on what we can and can't do with the Special Town Meeting, which is very clear, thankfully.
Yeah, it took forever, though.
Took forever to get, but we got it.
So at our last meeting, we had decided the best thing to do would be to vote on the Australian ballot, with an Australian ballot.
Which they said you can't do.
Which they said we can't do. And so we basically have to have a meeting from the floor to, to decide that. So, and we got confirmation both from VLCT and from the Secretary of State's office, so, and they, they agreed.
Wow.
One thing that we could do, if we want to, and it would have to happen in the meeting, is that, and I'm just going to read, this is from Susan Stinning, a lawyer at VLCT. "One option would be to open and then vote to continue the special town meeting to a date, time, place certain, effectively postponing the meeting until it is safer to be in person or it's warmer and you can hold the meeting outside." And then she just reiterates that voting to switch to Australian ballot by using an Australian ballot is not an option.
So essentially, those attending the meeting would have to make that decision?
They would have to make that decision, yeah.
So we don't even need to be involved in that?
And, you know, my concern for this meeting is that we are kind of at the height of this new surge of COVID, and I don't know how many people are going to feel safe coming to this meeting. We're going to be voting by Australian ballot for this year's items on the town warning anyway. To me, I mean, just as, from my own personal opinion, it would make, I would feel better if we did postpone it in the meeting to a time when things were a little bit more laid back in the world of COVID pandemic, so that more people could attend and participate. I mean, it's a pretty important decision to make, and it would seem kind of weird to make it, have like 10 or 15 or 20 people there to make that decision. That's my opinion.
I've got another idea. Since it's not, you know, even if it passed, it wouldn't take effect this year, so the people who submitted the petition could actually withdraw it and send, put it back in, say in May or June, when things might have changed, or we could hold an outdoor meeting, but that would be up to them.
Well, so what, that is in the stat, I read the statute the last time. What would have to happen is enough petition signers would have to withdraw their signature to drop it below the 5%.
But it wouldn't be, wouldn't be withdrawing, it would just be physically, he could say, okay, I'm going to take this back for now, and then he could bring it in any time, you know, in a couple months. Who knows what COVID is going to be like, but still, at least we could have a meeting outdoors.
COVID needs to allow vacation.
Uncomfortable about...
Really tired of COVID.
Uncomfortable about coming to an open meeting when it's been trying so hard to stay away from crowds.
So, Mike, what are your thoughts? This is kind of your, your thing.
Well, that's not mine, it's everybody's.
Right, it was all the people, so that's why I said, what I said, is that's what the statute says.
And, I mean, say all people are concerned with going to the meeting, all people aren't concerned about going to the meeting either, so, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a fine line. I mean, I could ask them, but I don't think they would want to.
How many, what number of people would you need to, what's 5% of the...
It's like 36.
36.
So what the statute, it says, if, if you had, say you had 40 and five people using the number 36, took their names off, which you'd have to tell Robin that, that would nullify the meeting, but I think you had more than that.
Oh, yeah, 45, I'm sure I think it was.
And it's clear enough, they want to have, have a meeting. I just, the only other option is those attending the meeting could, but to me, it seems like if you're in the meeting...
You're already there.
You're already there. So, I mean, it's, it's really not up to this board at this point. It's, we've scheduled the meeting.
We, we have to go through...
We have to go through with it.
But there is this aspect of being in a room for a certain length of time.
Right.
So, you know, if we could be there and end it within 15 minutes, we're safer than if you're there for a couple hours.
It sounds like it's going to be up to those attending the meeting, whether they choose to vote on it, or whether they choose, because again, you're going to be voting and debating either way, I'm assuming.
Yeah, people show up, they might already have their minds made up, and they can just shut up.
Well, I'm assuming that's probably the case, because this is one of those type of issues.
Yeah, right.
But it does mean we don't need to have the informational meeting on the 5th, because there's not much, I mean, again, I just, this is a really simple issue. I mean, it might be, it has a lot of implications that aren't simple, but, you know, it's a kind of a, you either think it's good or you don't think it's good.
Yeah, the informational meeting would be, we had thought of that if we were going to...
Just that we was going to be, yeah. That's why I was glad they were clear about it. Like, very rarely do you get clear guidance, and then two people that give you the same guidance.
I think an informational meeting is helpful, because people don't think about the history involved in town.
Well, that's what the actual...
But they can do that in the meeting. That's what I'm saying, because we're having the meeting, so they can have that conversation in the meeting. That's what I, that's my thought. Instead of having two meetings that people don't want to go to, they can just, that, again, I think that's the purpose of why the legislature said you can't vote to change Australian ballot by Australian ballot, because they want people to be able to have that conversation. That's kind of what I gleaned from that.
We had originally thought that, you know, the, if we were going to vote for it by Australian ballot, that then the informational meeting would have been important to have, so that discussion could happen. But now that we're obliged to actually meet in person, then that's where the discussion can, can happen.
And just, we're at the point where it's just out of the board's hands now, so it's just kind of on the, whatever happens at the meeting, and you want to oversee it, so...
I've got some comments about that. I may, so, at the last meeting, I was nominated to, or asked if I would serve as a temporary moderator, and volunteered to do that, so I've been doing some research over the last couple of weeks. And I've got some information, I'd like to just give it to you. I've got two extra copies for the public, if you'd like one. Some, some things that we need to consider, some questions, and some of the statutes here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. So...
Thank you.
So one of the duties of the moderator is to preserve order. So we, we've been, at the last meeting, we questioned whether there would be masks required at the meeting. I think that's a big question we need to establish at the outset. And, and then how to preserve order at the meeting? That's another duty of the moderator. We talked about the moderator sometimes working, the constable, to keep order. And also how, there's a process here for, for moderator to be elected at a meeting. It's my understanding that, that at the beginning of the meeting, there will be no moderator.
Exactly.
Can I just ask something?
Yep.
Before you get, wait, brother. Has Steve Firehagen said he won't be at this meeting?
Yes, he has resigned. Yeah, he, he was concerned about people being there, not wearing masks.
Thank you.
And Paul's going to be out of town.
I'm going to be in a class, so I won't be there. We'd do it otherwise.
At the beginning of the vice, the vice chair of the board is going to have to open a meeting, one of these guys, whatever that is.
Guess that's me.
And then, so under the statute, under section 2657, the, in the absence of, of a moderator, select board member shall preside until moderator pro tempore is chosen, temporary moderator. So I, I'm willing to be, if I am nominated and elected, I would serve, but it's my understanding that there would need to be an election of a moderator.
That's true, just like a town meeting.
Yep.
And, and you can anticipate that you will be elected moderator.
Okay, I'll be ready. Ready or not. And then I, I was reading the handbook for Vermont moderators, published by the Office of the Vermont Secretary of State. Says there's no requirement that the moderators be sworn before taking office, so we could just proceed after the election. So then... So then, this would, this would bring me back to the, a couple of points I had up at the top there. To prepare for, it can be prudent to have an understanding of how, how the meeting would proceed. Whether or not attendees would be required to wear a mask, does, does the select board know for certain whether, whether masks would be required of all attendees?
Based on the rules for the space that we are using, you would be required to wear a mask.
Although.
And we can anticipate that there will be people not wearing masks.
Right, I just don't think we should be in a position of.
And at that point, we're just gonna have to deal with that. I mean, maybe we could ask them to isolate themselves away from, uh, people who are wearing masks. I mean, I don't know how that will go, but there will, I would anticipate there will be people there.
That someone's gonna, here's my issue with the, I personally would respect it, some may not. Um, I don't want us to be in a position of having to be the mask police, and, because are we gonna call the police to arrest somebody? Are we gonna, because again, then you've got an issue of violating someone's right to attend the meeting and vote over the mask. So, I think a better position is to strongly encourage people to wear the mask, remind them that it's the rules at the school, but I just don't know what you're gonna do if someone flat out refuses.
The schools, we're using their building with their, I mean, I know it's our building, but, you know, whatever. It's, we're using their building with their permission. If they decide that we can't use it because we're not applying by their rules, then our meeting comes along and we'd be in trouble.
Right. But I'm saying, the, the problem is, what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the censure, I mean, the state police aren't gonna come and haul it out. I just don't think it's very becoming to have the constable dragging someone down the sta, you know where I'm going with this thing, so I, I, my suspicion that most people will.
It's good to talk about it.
Most will comply, and then others will just have to tolerate what happens.
Could we ask the moderator to, I mean, the, the constable to, like, to stand at the door and hand out masks?
You could. Monty?
I would suggest having an area for non-mask.
That's what I would.
That's what I would, that's a good idea.
Have an area, six to twelve feet away from.
If you're uncomfortable without the, with the mask.
And anybody, because you're, I mean, I will, will wear a mask there, but you're gonna have people that aren't gonna.
That are not gonna.
Aren't going, and they're gonna have, they're gonna have site statutes that say they don't have to, and they're, they don't have to.
And I just don't think we wanna be in that fight. It's just gonna be.
It's also just, I'm putting out there, I'm not, I'm not gonna be the person that's, you know, I don't wanna be the constable at that event.
Right.
But, um, you know, there is a mandate to accommodate elderly and disabled, and you, and that's above the mandate to accommodate other people. And so I, I would argue that you're in a position of not complying with the public meeting if people who are elderly or disabled feel that they're at risk, because there's people there without masks on.
Well, there are people that do feel they're at risk, and, and like our, our former moderator, who is not, you know, not coming, and actually resigned as the moderator, um, because he was pretty much anticipating that there would be people without masks there, and he didn't wanna place himself in that situation.
So disenfranchised, because there are people that are not.
That's just, that's the way our, that's the situation.
People that can't wear a mask.
Yeah.
Whether that's so or not so, but they're gonna, there's people making that, because that I physically can't wear a mask, I got claustrophobic. It's not, I just, we can't be in that place. I, I think I like the idea of the separate area, because that should keep people safe.
No, still, you mean, still, a lot of people aren't gonna come because, even with a mask.
That's true.
People are gonna come, not gonna come, mask or no mask, so I just.
Because, just because everybody's wearing a mask doesn't make people like Steve comfortable.
Right, he's still not gonna come.
He's still not gonna come.
This, uh, this issue poses a real dilemma for, for this, not just our town, it's not just.
All over.
To this town. You look at the statute under twenty-six sixty-seven, "The legislative body of the municipality shall take reasonable measures to ensure that voters who are elders or have a disability may conveniently attend annual or special meetings." That interpret, an interpretation of that could, could apply to both sides of this. People who.
Yes, absolutely.
Claim that they have a disability, so far as they, they shouldn't be exposed to someone who's not wearing a mask, and then on the other side, somebody claims they have a disability, they can't wear one. So, again, this is important that we talk about this now, and it's, I guess the objective is to get as many people as we can.
To come, yeah.
To the meeting, so we can effectively address the art of.
I think the good middle ground is a maskless area.
I agree.
We'll just keep it separated by ten, whatever, six feet's the number that they came up with, I don't, I don't know what else to do.
Yeah, and then the publication, you know, I mean, obviously, we're gonna publicize this meeting, again, you know, it's been warned and all, but we could mention that, um, so that people who might, um, be hesitant on coming, um, anticipating that there will be some people not wearing masks.
Those people that complain that they're being treated like cattle, you know, we, we have those stanchions.
It's, it's the happy medium.
They have to be willing to compromise a little bit.
Well, we'll cover something, that's, people will complain about anything, so what I discovered, so. No matter what we do, it won't be the right for somebody.
If we just do the best we can and.
Okay, and it says, you know, at, at the end of that, at section twenty-six sixty-seven, "The legislative, for the purposes of this section," that's referring to the accommodations, "legislative body shall have full jurisdiction on the day of the municipal meeting over the premises at which the town meeting needs to be held." So.
So that supersede gives you.
The school.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's an agreement that we have in, in the lease also.
But again, what the statute's saying is our authority supersedes whatever they got, so. I, I, does anyone disagree that's a happy medium?
I, I think that's the best compromise we can come up with.
I don't know what else to do, I.
I, I propose one more thing, but it's consistent with Mike, what Mike already said. Um, is, is just provide a notice to the public, giving them some information on what will constitute an orderly meeting.
Well, it's Roberts Rules of Order.
Yeah.
They're supposed to follow.
Yeah, yeah, that way.
You know, so it's perfectly within your purview as a moderator to say, each person, like Steve would do, because having studied Roberts, that's what we're gonna follow. Um, you as a moderator can say, we're gonna allow someone to speak for five minutes, say, or you could all agree that it's endless, whatever. You can also do, um, we're gonna let five, you know, everyone speak once before five people speak twice. Those are things you as a moderator can do.
And Stephen, if, if, you know, I'm willing, if you would be willing to help write that notice, I would be willing to participate in that, and to, because this meeting will happen before the next select board meeting.
Yeah.
That's right.
No, I think we, do we have? You may be right.
I think we've got a three-week vacation.
We do have a three-week vacation.
Yeah, that's the, first of February is on Tuesday.
Will we do two notices in the papers?
You're right, this, this meeting will happen. He's right, the next meeting's the fourteenth of February.
Do we have to re-warn the warning?
I have it in the papers, and I've just hung it in there in five places.
Okay, so we've done, yeah, um.
What, the ten days before the meeting?
Five.
We looked at.
Five.
Are you sending all cards or stuff?
Not for the.
Not for the special town.
The, the, the regular town meeting, so people, for people who might wanna request an absentee ballot.
Yeah, send it into the papers, uh.
Because this one has to be live, oh, we can't be remote.
The town website, and we'll.
The local town website.
So what date would you want that notice to be finished for public, you know, for posting? There'd be the warning.
I would have to have it a, a week from this Thursday, a Wednesday, so I can get it into the papers on Thursday.
So that'll be the second of February. Okay, so we'll try to get there.
And that, that could include some of this information about the, the conduct of the meeting.
It can be very, because, because again, the whole Roberts Rules by design is to conduct a meeting where people passionately disagree about something. We just don't do it very well, because really, you're not supposed to discuss something till there's a motion, and somebody seconds it, and then, because we always discuss it, and then someone makes, usually, two people in the room have to agree we wanna discuss it, and then you discuss it, and.
You're gonna have any issues?
I don't think it's, it shouldn't be discussed.
The only thing is, is your mask, non-mask thing.
Right.
Other than that, I don't.
I, I don't think it's gonna be super contentious. There may be some passionate debate, which is a good thing.
There's gonna be passionate for, passionate against, and then, well, I don't think it's gonna be a big issue.
I keep preaching people need to disagree and just be nice still.
Yeah, but, but, by the disorder, I was just more referring to how we manage the masks or non-mask.
Yeah, I think just say this.
But, but if it's clearly established that we're gonna have separate areas, so attendees may or may not wear masks.
I think I'd make the signage that the expectation, like people to wear a mask. That's what our expectation is, however, there'll be a spot, if you don't, and we'll have masks available, and.
Should we bring up the stanchions, those?
Nah, you wouldn't do.
No, that's too, that's a little too.
That's probably too much. But you as the moderator then can reiterate, we'd, we'd really appreciate those that aren't wearing masks to please use this area. If they don't move, I guess we're just stuck with what we've got.
I mean, we could have it, you know, at town meeting, usually there's a group that likes to sit at.
Hide in the back, yeah.
In the back, and then there are other people that sit in the chairs, and maybe the tables in the back could be the, where people without masks can be, and, and then, because, and then people, you know, who are wearing masks, who wanna do the physical distancing too, they could set up in their little, little pods or whatever. Um, and we could try to maybe have the chairs set up that way, or, um, rather than in the rows that we would typically have. I'm kind of clueless on how many people will have to be.
Yeah, I don't know, it could be huge, it could be, I don't know, I really don't know. So I just just lay it out the way you want, I just.
Yeah, yeah, just what you would like to see and have people know, and.
Following the KISS principle, make it something reasonably enough so everyone can follow it pretty easy.
My only other thing I would mention for you, Steve, is be stern.
Yeah.
Be stern.
You're running the meeting. If you're not recognized, you don't talk, that sort of thing.
Probably will bring the gavel.
Bring your gavel. My experience has been most people will be fairly polite.
Yeah, and I.
Try to respect each other's space a little bit.
Yeah. And it's, you know, it's, uh, discussion, I mean, a lot of towns have debated this, and, and some have made the changes, and some have chosen not to, so it's not, it's a, it's an issue that, um, is, is definitely current and, and has been happening for a number of years.
A lot of towns have switched, so.
Yeah.
So, two things you should be prepared for is, um, calling the question, somebody's probably gonna at some point call the question to stop the discussion.
And that, that must be voted on immediately, that doesn't need a second.
Whether, okay, whether or not, uh, somebody might ask for a paper ballot.
Yeah, yeah, sounds like.
Just check up on your Roberts Rules, because like, a couple of motions, like a motion adjourned doesn't need a second, a calling the question doesn't need a second, it just needs to be voted, and I think it has to pass by a two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
So just brush up on those type of things, get in your Roberts Rules.
I will.
Some of those motions are a little weird.
So, Robin, what about the logistics of the meeting? Are you kind of overseeing that as the town clerk?
He's an election official, he knows the town for. So, yeah, I guess.
Maybe they'll move my class, I have a class for a job, is why I can't be there a couple weekends. I wanna be there, but oh, well.
Yeah, I could be there to help with that.
I'll check the weekend, I'm like, yep, I'm gonna be in Pittsburgh. They might remote it, but I'll still have to sit at my house and sit through my Zoom screen.
I think the school has a PA, didn't we, haven't we used the school PA and, or let a little amp and a couple microphones?
I thought Steve had that stuff.
I think this last time, it was school equipment, and before that, we had had somebody bring it in.
It's been two years since we've had a town meeting, so.
Was it Gagnon's? And then I think, um, HCTV has provided us with some kind of.
Well, yeah, and, uh, Robin Grant brought his stuff one year, rented it, and Gagnon's a couple of years, but I think the school has something more recent than that.
I'm checking with the Kans who they have.
Yeah, let's talk to John, because John knows just about all the ins and outs.
I know we got an amp, the friends of WS bought an amp flyer.
Okay, I thought I remember seeing, seeing that, yeah.
Okay, maybe that's what it.
You know, a couple mics that go with it, or at least one mic, or?
I don't remember about the mic situation, do you remember, I mean, performing at that?
We'll figure that one out. And then I guess we probably should have, each time somebody speaks into the mic, we probably should wipe it down with.
Yeah, that's not really spread in that way. Just don't sneeze on somebody.
Put your mouth on it.
The Omicron is so potentially infectious, it take one sneeze, it'll get everybody. That's how this stuff's going fast. Everybody I've talked to is like, I got COVID, I got COVID, everybody got COVID.
The whole town would hear it, yeah.
Yeah, oh, it's not encouraging at all. I went in one room, fifteen people, they all got it. Oh, yeah.
So, Robin, I'm glad to help set up too, so.
You didn't get very sick, but.
Tim, please, sinfully.
So maybe was this.
That's what I'm telling you, not, it was just to the point where it's like.
This is Saturday.
No, I mean, the Friday before it is set up.
Yippee.
Set up a room.
Yeah, this isn't town meeting, it's not town meeting time yet.
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, the, the Friday before, there will be school, so you'll have to go in that night, evening.
Or in the morning.
It's, yeah, it didn't start till ten, so.
Yeah.
Trying to control this reminds me of the recorder standing in front of the vault, saying the government's gonna be going under control, and I'm like.
Supervise that and buy some volunteer stuff to move tables and stuff. Okay, so, yeah, um, if we had our remote access stuff, which we might, but probably not, we could try to use it, but I don't know.
You can't vote remote.
No, we, no, not for voting, but just for people to be able to.
To listen in, yeah.
Listen in or, or express an opinion.
I think it'd be, that's gonna be hard.
Is HCTV gonna be there?
I don't think so, that's basketball.
Yeah, it's Mike Club, right?
Basketball time, that's the.
Really?
Yeah. Seems doubtful that they would be. But, um, Leaf Goldberg was gonna look into, I did ask him about it, but he did mention that there's a basketball game starting at eleven Saturday morning, so, and that's, that's a big draw for the.
Maybe we have to dig out our little recorder. I don't know whatever happened to that.
The digital recorder?
Yeah, the little recorder that Skip bought a few years ago.
I might have that at home.
I think you might have.
I was using it for select board meetings, so I think it's.
And we're gonna have to have some kind of record.
Yeah, we will have to keep minutes, you're right. Um, I think that's, I think I have that.
Do you have some kind of time trajectory on that technology that?
That's our next subject, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, we're about to get there. Yeah, no, we're about, that's next, we're gonna talk about buying that stuff.
We have, we have a listing of what, what would be needed, but, yeah, so I will, I, I know, I have it, I just have to, hopefully I can find it. I think I know.
You have the old cassette recorder, I guess.
Right, we could, yeah. I have an old cassette recorder, too.
Good luck finding a cassette.
Actually, I have a couple. I, I think they have some old leading minutes on them, actually, for meeting, um, record, recording. Anything else can you think of for?
You good?
Seems like.
Yes, thank you for that discussion.
I'll give you, brush, brush up on your Roberts Rules, because those, those couple of those motions are a little.
And, and thank you for being willing.
Thank you very much. All right.
Okay, so.
We are up to.
Remote access proposal. Okay, so Leaf Goldberg did provide us with, um, a list of equipment that we would need, um, and basically, it would be, we would need a, a camera, a webcam of sorts, um, and he, in his proposal, gave us two options, um, and then, uh, we would need a tripod, or, or we could try to clip mount a webcam onto a, a laptop, but a tripod would give us more range of motion on where to actually set up the camera.
Better.
Better, yeah, yeah, so, and the tripod is pretty cheap. Um, and then, um, the other thing that we would need is microphones, um, and there are two, two considerations. Um, we could probably get by with two mics, especially in, in this room. Um, when we move back to the town hall, um, we would probably want, um, four mics, so they're a hundred dollars apiece. Now, let me mention the prices. So the, the two webcams, um, one is for, it's on sale, usually sixty bucks, it's on sale for twenty-eight bucks, and then there's another one, uh, with the same price, about sixty bucks, that isn't on sale. Um, there's a good possibility that by the time we order the camera that is on sale, that it might not be on sale, so I was just kind of thinking that sixty dollars for a camera, the tripod is thirty dollars, um, the microphones are a hundred dollars apiece, so whether we got two or four, um, it would be either two hundred dollars or four hundred dollars. Um, so then what we would need is a, a small audio mixer, um, and, uh, this would basically, um, so there's two that Leaf, um, put on the, the, this, one would handle two mics, and the other would handle four, so again, whatever we decide on the microphones, um, the, the mixer that would handle two mics is a hundred dollars, the mixer that would handle four mics is four hundred dollars. And the, the reason for having a mixer is that, um, let's, and, let's say, like, Tegan. Let's say like Tegan is, is monitoring the remote access on a laptop for the participants, um, and then, um. With the mics in the room, um, Leaf used to do this when we, when we, uh, live streamed from the town hall, um, summer, last summer. Let's say, um. There'd be one for the select board and then some around the room, if somebody is speaking lowly and it's not picking up very good, the mix, the person monitoring that could turn the mic up. And it would, people will be able to hear it better who are doing the remote access, if somebody has a really booming voice, they could turn it down, uh, stuff like that.
Question on the mixer.
Sure.
If you get the one for the four mics.
Mm-hmm.
And you decide to have your meeting here where you only need two mics, can you use that same mixer?
Of course, yeah, we just have two mics in there instead of, instead of four, yeah. So, um, the next thing that we would need is speakers that would basically go into the laptop. Um, and these would allow people, um, who are speaking through the laptop, who are accessing, um, the meeting remotely, um. It would allow the people in, that are there in person to be able to hear them better, you know, like when, when Chuck has been here on the laptop, we've all got to listen pretty closely, um.
He'll listen with computer speakers.
So those speakers are basically, uh, I don't, he, he didn't mention whether. He calls them speakers, so I don't know if that's a pair or one.
It's usually a pair.
Yeah, usually a pair, so it'll be, if it is a pair, um, one set of speakers, um, which is five watts, which is your. Um, you know, how loud it would be or how loud it could be, those are twenty-five dollars, and then. A pair that, um, are ten watts, which would give us more volume, um, would be forty dollars, that's if they're a pair.
So it's a thousand bucks.
Yeah, so basically, yeah, yeah, we're getting, yeah, and then if we wanted, um. We could get a larger monitor, um, larger than the, uh, laptop monitor, um. Or, um, what we could try to do, we have, do have a digital projector.
Just play it on the, on the. Whatever that thing's called.
Digital projector?
That.
Yeah, yeah, the digital projector, we could, um. We could, instead of a monitor, we could project the image of the person, um. That's speaking, um, through the, through the remote access, and the remote access would basically be zoom, using the zoom video conference and things. We could project the image, um. And we already have the.
So it looks like a thousand bucks.
A thousand bucks, if we, if we go for the, the, um, I guess I'll call it the best case scenario where we have four mics and we have the best.
Cadillac.
It's just right, pretty much right at a thousand dollars.
And, and we don't need a, a different computer to support.
Well, uh, Skip, Skip Markasani did suggest, I mean, we have a number of town laptops, but they're specifically for. Like the Listers or, you know, Brandy has one now so she can, um, work at home. And, you know, Skip is suggesting that, that we actually get a laptop for this alone, um. Which is another six hundred bucks.
So we're talking sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That goes up.
There is a, there is a town court laptop, I don't know, but it was purchased for.
Did Laura Daley?
Elections, and so we hardly ever use it, I don't know if you.
Well, that, that might be a, and ideally in a way it would be good to have.
It's a shame to have something sitting there for years and, you know, it'll be defunct before it's.
So we have a laptop you think we can use?
That would be up to Robin.
Are you using it?
I'm not using it.
You used it, no?
Then we might as well use it.
We should try using it, yeah.
Monte.
At the last meeting we talked about the owl, I didn't, I didn't do any research, but, I mean, something to get a lot of components here to do this would, it sounded like the owl did everything.
Just replace the camera.
Well, it sounded like it did everything.
Yeah, all it does is the camera piece.
It wa- it wouldn't be as good for the audio because it's a single point.
Does it have a speaker in it and stuff?
Yeah.
I think it does, yeah, it has one speaker, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you got all these components.
Right.
If that one unit does what all this does.
Uh, yeah, I don't know how well, I mean, Leaf. Uh, well, yeah, Leaf is basically, um, not all that, um. Favorable of an owl, there are a lot of shortcomings with them, um. So I think that's why he, and this is what Hardwick is using now, and it does seem to be working pretty well, I think they.
The owl, it looks like the minimum owl's a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
The owl pro is twelve, twelve hundred bucks. But you're in that one little speaker. So I don't know, I don't know, I just don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, look, towns are, other towns are buying things like that with their ARPA money.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is right in the guidance.
And they don't even have to wait.
So we would just get, I'm sure this would, once we're through the process, this would get funded by that.
But you don't have to wait, is what I'm saying.
And then, and then Leaf did tag on to this, um. Consultant fees of, you know, yeah, he asked for fifty dollars for the, um, this list that he put together, he did all the research, uh, for where. We could order it and what to order, and then he would be there to help, um. With the setup and to train someone to, to learn how to, to, to do it all, um, for another, for a fifty dollars, so he's asking for a hundred dollars consulting fees. Guess we could call it, so we should add that to, to, I guess, um.
So if someone wants to make a motion.
Are we gonna include, are we including, we're gonna, we're gonna stay away from a new laptop for now, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna go with the four speaker and the, the four mics.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would give us the best.
Just looking at this thing, mine, it looks like it's about this big, so trying to hear, it might not be very good for that.
And they would be pretty much like what we have here right now.
Yeah, they're little.
Yeah. Yeah, that would, that way when we're in the town hall.
It makes more sense.
Cause there'd be, there's definitely more space.
Would be nice in this renovation process, we permanently set a lot of this stuff up, so you can just walk in and turn it on and.
Yeah, there, there was a, um, um, another microphone that would actually hang from the ceiling, um, and Leaf said that, you know, if you ever were. In a more permanent setup, like we're shuffling.
Permanently, cause the rooms I've used for this purpose, they got all this stuff set up, you just turn it on, turn on the computer and your big screen comes on and everything, it'll go. Which is where I think we need to go, but we're not, we're not there with a spot yet.
Right, yeah, the plan with the town hall is to actually have an internet connection there, um, so that we could, could, you know, plug all this stuff in and. So what, what, what was kind of a final figure there, Paul, if we did get a.
I had sixteen hundred with the computer.
Okay.
If we don't get the computer, it's around a thousand bucks.
Around a thousand, yeah.
Plus another hundred dollars for consultant fees.
And consulting fees, so say eleven hundred bucks.
Yeah.
And I would suggest we pay it out of the ARPA money.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Who's going to apply for that?
Well, we need to make a, we need to make a submission to the ARPA committee.
Well, we can, we don't have to, I just, I think it's respectful that we do that.
Yeah, no, we should.
The board, the board has full authority to fund anything they want, the board makes the final decision is all I'm saying. What we did this for is have a public process, so I think it's only fair to run it through there, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Go around the process, but.
We do have one member here, but, yeah, so, yeah, I think we should go submit a, um, of course. So what the ARPA committee needs to do is come up with an application form. Um, so that we can do this and as soon as possible, I guess, so we can get this.
We have an application form.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they're gonna, are you gonna wait for a deadline for people to submit their?
No, we can do this right now.
I know you can, but I'm just asking.
Oh.
I feel like I can't answer what's going on with the question right now, I, I don't feel like I have a good answer for it, so we're all around that, but. I do have good announcements, but that, I don't have a specific announcement.
So I suspect we'll be paying it out of our own funds for now and then we'll.
We could do that, that would be the way, yeah, that would be the way.
I mean, if we want to get on this.
Yeah.
It's really our only option.
So, um.
Did I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, let's say, uh, twelve hundred dollars, just, that we, um, spend twelve hundred dollars for the equipment for remote access for town meetings. Town function meetings, so this could be for the select board, oh, good for that, that's not part of the motion, I make a motion that we spend.
Just to buy it, yeah.
Twelve hundred dollars.
How we use it, whatever.
To, um, to acquire the equipment that's been, um, presented to us by, uh, um, our consultant, Leaf Goldberg.
Second motion?
You have a motion and a second, is there further discussion from the board or any member of the public?
Well, it's just, let's say, it wouldn't be ready for town meeting if you go through this ARPA committee thing.
Well, no, we're gonna buy this and then.
So you're gonna buy it.
You're gonna buy anything and then submit.
We could, I just think it's better to.
It's better to go through.
Better to go through that for a process.
We set the committee up for that and we should.
Cause, cause the board makes the final decision on where the funds go, the committee makes a recommendation, I just don't think it's fair. Although we could do that, I just don't think it's fair to have a committee and not use it myself.
We should, they're there and, and they should be respected and.
Not respectful of people's time.
The last, did you have a feeling for when all that would happen? I'm just, we have a meeting for the ARPA committee, I'd love.
Let me, let's vote and then we'll.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
So let's, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it passes.
So, um, I could go down to the town office, uh, sometime and, and. Use the town's credit card and.
Buy this stuff.
Order this stuff this week.
And just make sure, uh, Brandy keeps a.
Right.
Account of it, okay.
You know where it is?
The credit card? Mm-hmm, I will not be there tomorrow.
Okay, well, I, I actually have a full work week, it's gonna be hard to meet up, oh, wait, you're open tomorrow evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Not really.
I'll come down tomorrow evening and, and do this.
All right, so we're up to, follow ups and updates, you at ARPA?
Is ARPA on the list?
It's not there, but it's, it's an update.
Okay, well, just, uh, we do have our experts lined up for a public meeting, uh, February sixteenth at six o'clock, so we got someone from Vermont. Um, we get the region towns and a woman from the Central Vermont Regional Training Commission.
What day of the week is the sixteenth?
The Wednesday of April, at six o'clock. And we're trying to have a remote as well as in-person option.
You gonna do it here at the school or the town hall?
I think the school's closer.
Is it right?
Oh, you're right.
I will have to run it past, I haven't run it past them yet, so, yeah, we just got, I just got the date slip by today, so I will call John tomorrow.
Yeah, if we can get this stuff ordered tomorrow, it will be here within a week. As long as everything is available at this.
Wonderful.
Weird town.
Great.
Yeah, and then maybe, maybe that could be when Leaf shows us how to.
I'll start breaking it right away.
Michael, maybe we want to get some volunteers to get in on that demonstration for me.
Right, have more than one person knows how to run it.
Yeah.
Can't rely on Skip and Skip for everything.
No.
No.
Very bad in an organization, I want to have one person that can do anything, better have multiple people. Diana.
Could you skip over that town meeting discussion?
No, we're on special town meeting.
We don't really have a town meeting.
There wasn't a line for just.
No, it was just special town meeting, we can talk about it, it's an update, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you good with ARPA, is that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I thought I saw it.
Nope, but we can do it under a follow up, so follow up.
Yeah, or other business or whatever.
So that meeting will be, uh.
I just wonder, the pre-town meeting on Saturday, if that stuff would be available.
Yeah.
At that point, because that would be, even though there's no voting during the pre-town meeting, some people might like to.
No, we would plan, we would plan on.
We set the pre-town meeting for the.
Saturday.
Twenty-sixth.
Saturday before.
Right, Saturday the twenty-sixth at ten.
Number is for that day.
I'm gonna put that in my calendar.
And we are going to, where have we decided to hold that, at the town hall?
Town hall.
Town hall.
No, I don't think so.
We did, yes, we did.
Really?
Yeah. Cause just anticipating that there probably wouldn't be that many people there.
There usually isn't.
Monte.
How soon before a town meeting can you request an absentee ballot?
There's statute for that, I don't know.
I'm just curious.
As far as town clerk.
Soon as they're ready.
There, it's in my calendar, I'll promise to try not to.
That's not the answer I was looking for.
No.
I was looking for actual answer.
So let's see.
Is there, there must be something in state statute about that, I would imagine.
There is a date by which they have to be available, I think it's maybe. I don't know if it's February fourth, I don't remember. Got my gun.
We'll, we'll fight.
Okay, here we go, here we go, I got an answer, official answer.
Here we go.
The internet can't be wrong. Well, this is from Secretary of State, so it says, in Vermont, we make it easy to vote, if you prefer to vote early. Or by mail, you can vote starting as soon as ballots are available, but not later. Than forty-five days before the primary general election and twenty days prior to municipal elections, so twenty days. So we have to have those ballots ready by twenty days.
Yeah, so, see, March first.
And the internet can't be wrong.
So February ten?
So I think the first thing, we'll be working on postcards, send to everybody. And then get the ballots ready and.
Is there a major Hazen vote this year?
There should be a Hazen.
Robin, I think it's February ninth is when.
Okay.
We have to have those ballots ready for people to request an absentee ballot.
I was one of the people, and I think actually Laura.
Double count my counting, but that's.
Just looking back.
Uh, we went to go do the counting and we, we waited an hour, hour and a half for Greensburg to show up, so we didn't get started until like eight thirty, nine o'clock, we were there till midnight.
Greensburg thought they were supposed to count their ballots and they shouldn't have known.
Never, Michael, no good deed goes unpunished.
I know, but I don't want to be there, you know, I don't think anybody should have to be there till midnight, so I would ask Hazen Union to be sure that.
Well, it's not, it's actually the.
The local election officials.
The elec- well, it's the elementary school ballots that have to be commingled, but I think the Hazen ballots usually get commingled too.
They do get commingled, yeah.
And, uh, I think there might be a new rule, I think we might have to count them here before taking them up there.
I think that's what I read.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then each town will, will count their own and then the total goes.
Right.
And then, then do they get counted again?
Well, probably not, I, I don't know, it was a new, it's a new thing, it's, yeah, like you said, yeah, it's a different thing.
I wonder if we could kind of find out what.
Will we will.
People will be subjected to.
Subjected to, it's not gonna be your problem anymore, Michael.
I know, but it might be a counter, although it probably, I mean, for you to stay up till midnight, it's sort of like staying up all night, cause I usually get up a few hours later in the morning, so.
Also, we haven't, I don't think Robin decided whether we're gonna use the, uh.
The tagulator?
Or count them by hand, because it's like five hundred dollars to.
To get the machine program.
Program that thing every time.
Right. I would think that we'd be able to count them by hand, it's not a presidential election.
Right.
You got one volunteer here, I'll help.
Hey, I'll, I'll help. I will look it out.
You're representing our family.
You need my glasses. They're working on, I don't fog my glasses with the mask on. Try that on EMS call it, five below zero.
So I, I had a front row seat to the, uh, fire department putting out the fire at Kyle Neils and.
Oh, really?
Let me tell you, they earn their keep.
Yeah, we just fixed all the damage today.
You just did what?
Fixed all the damage.
To your own gear?
To your own gear.
All the trucks froze and lines froze and filled.
Fifteen below and the wind was really whipping from the north.
Pumps have coolers and all kinds of things. One truck was frozen solid by the time we were done and that broke off a bunch of fittings and gauges and.
Were you able to use the hydrant at the mill pot?
We did.
Yeah.
Till the line, four-inch line froze solid eventually after six hours.
Yeah, the wind was.
But what happens over time is it just gets smaller and smaller and smaller.
Right down the pond.
Once water starts flowing, you better keep it flowing, because if you stop for one minute, we had one hose someone shut off and in 30 seconds it was frozen. And then we had a pile of hoses deep in the building that was frozen for. Yeah, it was.
It was pretty brutal.
Hopefully.
Any report from the.
It's a.
Confidential problem.
It's not confidential. It's undetermined at this point, yeah.
And still smoking.
Is it still smoking? We went and put a thousand cups of water on it.
On Saturday morning call, there was actually flames and smoke. And I thought, well, I'll go over, I'll get my snow pusher and get a bunch of snow and throw it on top of it. But it's where it's still burning is
Under.
The tin roof, that's sort of over that.
You can't go out there, so what I'd have to do is get an excavator to pull it off and well, it's actually can't talk about now, but there's no insurance company to deal with for that at this point. So the town would have to pay.
Start the updates?
No.
Yeah. It's just what's going on. It's been my consuming for the last two years. It's taken all my time. All right.
Okay, so I do have an update on our, I'll call it just general derelict building issues that we've had on. Zoning, but, and I wanted to ask you, Robin, have the notices of violation, the one, the fines, notice of a letter about the potential of being fined to Angers Road, has that gone up to those property owners?
No.
No, okay. And is there any?
It's not that one.
Okay, what about on Flat Street?
That one has gone out and they have sent something back to.
Tony Board of Adjustments.
Thank you. I kept saying ZBA.
So they appealed.
Okay. So, and then I did have a phone conversation with Carl Fuller. He's the A&R person who sent the notice to Mike McGlynn about the folks, you know, with their application for a septic system that A&R is working on and some of the issues with Mike's property regarding that. And he basically told me that, you know, it's the state that oversees the water and the sewage, septic, so it's not an issue for the town. It's something that Mike and other abutting property owners, mostly Tim Appleton, and I also spoke to Tim. They're aware of what they have to do to address that, that notice. But he did mention to me that the, you know, we had talked some about having a health officer do an inspection and condemning a building. And he told me that that's basically a four-year process, so you could have a health officer do an inspection and if the building did warrant being condemned, then the owners of the building have four years to remediate that situation. And if they're living in the building, it's pretty much impossible to get them out. And you probably know all this.
And this is what I've been telling people, because it's my previous job, that's what I did. It was, the courts, you know, a person's home is their castle. And it's very difficult to actually, we had been doing it and our department got sued in the mid-2000s and was charged with not closing buildings. We were to compel people to make corrective action, so that's why this is so tough. That's what I've been trying to say in this process.
And in the age of our pandemic here, it's even tougher.
It's even tougher because trying to get a court date for something that doesn't rise very high up on the charts for the judge is very difficult.
So, and if someone was not, if no one was living in the building, then a condemnation of the building would keep people from living in there. So, you know, my thought from talking with Carl is that the town really needs to be a little bit more proactive if there's a building that's looking pretty decrepit and no one's lived in it for four or five years. It might warrant.
Do we have a derelict building officer? We have a derelict building?
We have a dangerous building officer and we have a dangerous building ordinance.
But not a derelict building?
Not a, no, that's.
Not all derelict buildings are dangerous. That's the problem. I'm serious, that's the primary end into this.
That's pretty much up to the health officer, town health officer, and now I just, it's new legislation. Bob Martin sent me an email that the legislature has, has passed a new act.
Have they passed? I know for the last five years it's been proposed.
Or it's in the works.
Yeah, it's been for about five years.
Yeah, it's S, S 201, where state fire inspectors might be, that they might.
That's why I left my previous job.
To their job, yeah, so.
It was time to retire.
Yeah. And so that would be, but I think, you know, in the future, I think we just have to be aware of buildings that are.
Yeah, there's a, just a update. There is a push to try to get some state agency to pick up the town health officer's stuff.
That would be great.
I don't think the fire marshal's office, the problem is they need 40 to 60 positions
Right.
To pick it up, and they're probably gonna give them four. And so I just said, yeah, time to go, but, so that's the political pot potato.
Yeah, it's like A&R with their enforcement and compliance.
Right, it's the same with burning.
Two guys.
Right, he has the fire warden, they run into the same thing. They kind of want the town to enforce the state clean air violations and I just won't do it, because it's like, it's the time, you know, going back to the health officer, why I was bringing this up is I will be in this seat in a couple more meetings, but for future boards need to look at, if you want enforcement of these things, you're gonna pay somebody to do it, because expecting a board member, part of why I don't want to be here is, is the expectation that a select board member is gonna stay on top of this. I mean, I was paid a lot of money to spend a lot of time, which is hugely time-consuming and involves court and writing affidavits and search warrants, and that's not a job for someone who, you're given a thousand bucks and, you know, it's 842 after taxes. It's just a completely unreasonable request.
That's one reason why I, got done on the select board when I did, because the whole thing up on Cabot Road was so horrible.
It was so horrible, it's just.
We don't have a, I mean, in that case, there were children involved and so they really had to move. And then we had to get them a new trailer and at that point, we had a grant program in town where we could lend them money to replace the trailer, but we don't have that now. And we also don't have a building code, which a lot of towns or cities at least do have, and I don't think we want one, but if you did have one, it would make it easier to.
So it's something for future boards to think about, because I, in my old position, at least getting paid, I ended up in court with injunctions over lead paint and over child abuse and, you know, it really quick could snowball into taking weeks of your time, and that's why, you know, and this isn't a $10 an hour position. It's probably a $30 an hour position if you want a quality person, so. But that's for somebody to think about.
And then Bob also sent me an email, which I found when I got home today from work, that apparently Ryan McCall has done a site visit at Flat Street. And I'm not gonna go through the details of it, but he did give them a number of things to, for compliance. He was able to speak with one, actually, the grandson was there when he did his site visit, but then one of the adults of the couple did return his call and so he's given them some issues of compliance. And we'll see where that goes. So that's kind of an update on, at least the two properties that we've been discussing the most here recently. And sort of a sense of what to do as far as condemning a building if we choose to do that in the future. And that's.
I've got a question. I'm sure we're not the only town dealing with problems.
Oh, yes.
Similar to this. I just wonder if anyone knows of other successful cases around the state.
I do.
You do?
Well, many other towns have a town administrator or manager, whatever you want to call it, that manages, long as we're on this topic, another reason I'm not gonna stay sitting in this chair is the amount of work that's done by Michael mostly, but a bunch of us in the background, for example, probably had 40 hours into paving the parking lot down there when I worked on that. So we just, you know, where an administrator, sort of touching this issue, administrator handles the day-to-day meeting with people, getting the permit applications filled out, filling, getting the RFPs written and getting the bids written, because, you know, town clerk, they will send that stuff out, but somebody's gotta write it, someone's gotta meet with the contractors. And so what others have done between having a town manager or administrator, even if it's not full-time, and they also paying positions to oversee enforcement of town ordinances, which is why I'm not necessarily opposed to town ordinances, but I am opposed to having an ordinance where there's no sane process for enforcing it, because that's where people's frustration comes out. You know, going down the poor zoning administrator, trying to make him, you know, just, at least they're paid by the hour, but it's just, you know, you need somebody to, to, to deal with all the paperwork and the meetings and the potential court time.
Yeah, and just following up on what Paul's saying, at the, last year, after town meeting day, VLCT, they have like a select board kind of training, I guess you'd call it, where a bunch of different people come and talk on different subjects and one of the subjects that was talked about last year is that there are towns, especially the smaller towns, that there are two different forms of, I mean, Hardwick has a full-time town manager, but there's also like an assistant town manager or, you know, basically part, there are two different designated positions that are sort of part-time. And I think at some point, Woodbury would benefit from that. I know, I know a couple of the select board members in Hardwick and, and, you know, they mentioned, what we pretty much do is.
Just go to the meeting and sign papers.
Work on policy. The town manager pretty much puts the agenda together, presents the information that's needed and they make, you know, they go yea or nay.
And that's been, that's where I was going. They just sit down and, where's the, oh, here's my agenda, here's the, okay.
So.
How does the town decide on things?
There would be something that we would, it would have to be decided.
Yeah, the board would have to collectively make it and put it before the voters, because it's a funding issue.
Road administrator, I don't think, you know, you need a budget for it.
You just have to budget for it. But, but, so my problem is, I think you're, you're losing the potential of a lot of people who are willing to serve just simply for time, because I know for me, I'd be happy to keep going. It's just, I cannot, I cannot put the time and I don't want to pretend and try to do it without, so.
And that, that's my reason for, you know, not finishing out my term is that it takes an incredible amount of time to do this, especially when you're doing the town managing stuff.
Right, because Michael, I can tell you, has done yeoman service. It's just, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work and a lot of time.
And it was very eye-opening and I, well, you've been on the board before. But those, yeah, it's been, it's much worse now, I think, and those that are gonna be walking into this seat, I feel bad for them. Because I, I, it hasn't been that pleasant for a lot of the time and it's just the, the stress, the sleepless nights, because you do worry about this stuff. And the other side of this is frankly, people are not very nice. You know, it's why I've been saying and saying, we should be able to disagree politely without calling, we, we've had people call us, my favorite was the most crooked select board on the history of earth. I've been called a thief. I've been called a liar. I've been called, you can see my stress coming up. I've been called shady. That's not me, and so I just, I don't need that in my life.
So, yeah.
This week I got called greedy.
Oh, kidding.
After putting in 60-some hours for no pay.
And the other thing is that the town manager is a whole different form of government and that does have to go.
Yeah, it's a whole, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but an administrator, some.
Town administrator.
You're kind of looking at two things. To me, I would say hire a part-time administrator and then if we're going to go down the ordinance road, we need to pay that position, because it's a difficult position. And you have to have clearly laid out expectations. And I'm not talking about a full-time job, but when the person spends time in the job, the you know, fire warden job, if, you know, I've never written a ticket, because as soon as I write a municipal ticket, I gotta go to court. Well, I only get a $500 stipend. I can't go to court. Anyone who's been to court, I've gotta collect evidence, I've gotta, you know, I do this for my regular job and previously working in major crimes and stuff, I, so I know how to do it, but you could spend all day collecting the evidence to go to court for one burning violation. You know, I've got to, who'd I talk to? When did they get the notice? How was the notice? What were they burning? Do you have photographs? Has it been documented? I'm not for that. Not for 500 bucks.
You know, and one, just in regard to ordinances, when, when we, you know, there was an issue before the select board maybe a year or so ago, maybe even more now, about people wanting a junk ordinance or some situations in town. So VLCT had a model junk ordinance and the town of Woolcot had basically kind of made a junk ordinance sort of based on that model. So I talked quite a bit to the, one of the select board members in Woolcot and, and they said, you know, the everything works fine as long as the property owner is willing to comply.
When they don't.
When they don't, it's, yeah, the, the whole enforcement thing is, it just gets, it gets long and.
It's really bogged down.
Uh, just, yeah, things just bog right down. So ordinances are one thing and, and the whole, the enforcement of them when there's non-compliance is.
Because once you go to non-compliance, you need to hire an attorney essentially to process it, because I've been involved right up in including where people have been living for four years in a building with no power, no water, no sewer, and they just aren't leaving. And the police don't want the visual of them dragging someone down the stairs out of their house, you know, unfortunately.
I want to say thank you all very much. I say that very sincerely. I think you're doing a really honorable job.
I don't think anyone in town thinks any of you are greedy on any level, so just.
Well, some do. I can share.
I've never heard anyone say anything like that.
Do we have any more updates?
Anything else?
Oh, there was one.
Diana?
We're putting together the postcard for warning people about town meeting and how to get a ballot and everything. Last year's postcard had Zoom information. Do you think we're gonna have that this year? Do you think for the pre-town meeting that we're gonna?
Yeah, we're gonna try to do that.
We're gonna try.
So how can we get that information?
Okay, well, we'll have.
Well, you could set the Zoom meeting up, whether we'll have the equipment to do it.
No, you, we can set it up anytime.
Yeah, we can set it up anytime.
And I know how to do that. I could either show you how to do it or it's, it's pretty simple.
Yeah.
And we could have it set up. And then we'll just have the equipment there.
So we can publish that on a postcard.
We could, yeah.
If people want to come to a pre-town meeting, they can, or they can.
Yeah, and we'll just have to take a risk. What we've done in the past when we've done Zoom meetings, in fact, that whole, well, however long we did our select board meetings as Zoom meetings, you would have the, the meeting ID number would be made public and then if people wanted to access the meeting, they had to inquire about what the passcode was.
Right.
And that was just a way of trying to keep somebody who wanted to totally disrupt the meeting.
Which I've been involved in for two years in another one of my positions.
But, I mean, we could just take the risk that that wouldn't happen and have both of the things, because it is a barrier, you know, it's another step you have to go to get the information.
And, and once you do Zoom for a public meeting, the VLCT has a
Has very specific guidelines.
That you need to read.
Yeah.
Because like, we're supposed to make everybody identify themselves. You gotta tell them, turn off their mics. You have a public comment, you gotta lay out only two minutes. You gotta read this little narrative at the beginning to make sure, because, because what happens is someone will take over your meeting, they can just start talking.
And there is, there is, you know, whoever is the host can
Can shut them off.
Can shut that person off. So we would need to have somebody watch.
Zoom makes it challenging to a, particularly if it's a contentious public meeting.
So that would be something for the moderator to worry about.
Well, luckily, he doesn't have to deal with that in his meeting.
Right.
The, the pre-town meeting, you'll have to deal with that.
That's what I mean, for the pre-town meeting.
Because unfortunately, you're gonna get elected for.
We, we could have, I mean, the moderator shouldn't have to be the person monitoring the.
No, he should not be.
No, he can't be. I'm happy somebody else has to do that or to.
Because normally what we tell people in our, my larger meetings, I go to quite a few, is people are to ask their questions in the chat. And then someone monitors the chat and then you say, okay, Fred Jones has a question, and then you call on Fred Jones and or the, if you got, like I've been in meetings with 300 people, the moderator, the, the chat person would go, okay, I've got 14 of the same question I'm essentially gonna ask is the pen blue that you're writing with.
And there is a little hands up.
Best way to manage that.
Back on to Zoom meetings.
It's easy with 10 or 12 people. You start getting into the hundreds, it starts getting really tough.
So the blur figure you're speaking about, that Vermont legal system, that's a legal blur that you need to say?
Well, yeah, well, I don't think you're required by statute, but what it does do is notify everybody participating in the meeting of what the rules are. Because what, what we've had trouble with is someone who wants to get in the public comments section, which we've had here, and talk for 25 minutes. So when I'm moderating a meeting like that, I tell people in the public comments section, we are not discussing this. You can make a comment, you get your two minutes, and then we're gonna move on. Because I had somebody get really animated, because I didn't answer their question. I said, you're not on the agenda. You know, it's respectful to these boards if you get on the agenda and we'll put some time in there, but to come in, we've had it here where someone spends, you know, 45 minutes on a public comment, by the time we go in, it's like, if you had this much, how about we call us and we'll put it on the agenda? Be respectful of everybody's time. So that's why it's there, to stop the filibusters and stop the
Yeah.
And just let you, no, you get two minutes, that's it, and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, or.
Or we're gonna, if you won't, we've had people that would be on the meeting but wouldn't identify themselves. You just get a phone number and you say, this phone number, I need you to identify yourself. If you don't, we're gonna kick you out of the meeting.
So there is, the language, on some of the former select board agendas, there was abbreviated language on that, and then on the planning commission, different meeting agendas, Skip be much more thorough than I am. I've had the, the full thing on there. So there is, we do have examples of what could be put on an agenda or warning. And of course, the VLCT has that.
Has all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just look on the website. And that was on the warning, that blur?
It's right on the meeting agenda warning, like.
Well, there's, and the thing you can read, I, I, maybe you'll dig it out. I have it somewhere. I can send, I think I have your email. Because I have it, because I, I, we used, when we were doing it, we started reading it. It's about a page, just, hello, this is a public meeting. These are the rules. If you want. These are the rules. If you have something to say, get in the chat. During the public comments section, you get two minutes. You will be asked to identify yourself. If you don't, you'll be kicked out of the meeting, blah, blah, blah.
So it's something that gets introduced at the beginning.
At the very beginning, yeah, it was the lay-in-the-ground rules, and if you don't obey the rules, the moderator is going to boot you.
Yeah, yeah, so we probably should do that.
That's how you maintain some civility, and it works, okay.
So that doesn't really sound like something we need for the ARPA.
You shouldn't probably.
That's a Q and A meeting.
Yeah, probably not. I think for you, I'd just lay out and say, hey, would you just please keep your questions concise? Let's not talk over each other. Please keep your mics off when you're not speaking, because you'll get all this feedback. Because some people turn their mic. I leave it on all the time. I don't even leave my camera on anymore, because of, once you record these meetings as a public record, they can request that recording, so they're looking at what's in your house, so I just leave my camera off.
And right at the moment, um, if there is a, like, a hybrid meeting where there's remote access, but there's also an in-person meeting, um, towns are not required to record the meetings, but when, last year, when we were in the emergency lockdown, um,
We did.
we were required to record the meeting. And fortunately, HCTV did that for us. They basically, um, oversaw the Zoom meetings, um...
And you just hit that record button, the moderator did.
Yeah, so...
Now, my suggestion in the recording department, if you're in a Zoom, I would record the meeting, because I have gotten public records requests for the recording, which is legitimate. Because they can get a transcript, but the problem is they say, well, you have a recording, or you should have had a recording of this video, so I would just record them and save them as a matter of course. I've done a whole bunch with this. A very painful exercise.
Yeah, and the recording is done how?
You just click record. You just press a button on the
It's in the same program.
It's in the Zoom. Whoever's the moderator, yeah.
Do a lot of Zooming.
Yeah, whoever the moderator, I'll have a little recording, and then it'll send a little message up to everyone who's participating. This meeting's now being recorded. Because I, what I have is people then request the recording, even, even though they get the minutes, they also want the recordings, so they can compare. It creates a whole nother level of complexity for you.
I'm sorry, pre-town meeting probably won't have, uh...
No, no, it's, it's when they get a more contentious.
Yeah.
Someone feels like somebody's...
Pre-town meeting is just a discussion, yeah, it's not, there are no decisions being made.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed an exchange. Did you, Michael, say that you would moderate the pre-town meeting?
Well, either I or Tegan, um, might be willing to do that too.
I could do it as well.
Yeah.
You mean open it?
I'm going to be there too, so.
You shouldn't have to do it. Somebody else should be taking, you know...
Well, you could, you could, somebody's got to moderate the pre-town.
No, moderate, moderate the digital.
The, uh, looking at the laptop, participants.
Yeah, yeah, Mike, those guys are going to...
It's, the moderator shouldn't have to do that, but the person doing that can let the moderator know that so-and-so, uh, on the, we have a remote access, has a question.
Right, so they'll monitor the chat.
But he still needs to moderate for the pre-town meeting.
You can be moderator at the pre-town meeting.
This is, this is moderating the people.